Okay, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Mr. Ridenhour is going to be a few minutes late. Again, appreciate everyone being here for an early morning work session. Again, this is an informal discussion on the FEAC proposal, recommendations on redistricting. No formal action by the Board may be taken at this meeting. Dr. Wilcox?
Well, thank you. In just a moment, I may ask Mr. Michaels to introduce his crew and lead the portion of the workshop. But what I wanted to share with the Board is that what our primary goal today is to have you say to the FEAC committee, "Thank you very much for your work. We've appreciated all that you've done for us," but then bring it into a board-staff process at this point so that we can go forward and review it at your leisure. Most of these changes take place in 2016, '17, so we have some time. I wouldn't propose that we would go through all five or really even two, three of the sections. I think we should take our time, walk through them, learn about the rationale behind each decision, and make sure that you feel comfortable that we're doing the right thing, not just for tomorrow, but for the foreseeable future. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Michaels, who will introduce his team and then kind of start the workshop.
Well, good morning. I think FEAC is excited today to try to hand off the process to the Board and to staff. They have worked diligently over more than a year's worth of time now at this point. Redistricting, I liken to a master schedule. There is no perfect master schedule. For every master schedule I've seen, I've looked at how I could tweak it, make it different, not necessarily better, but different. And I think that's the way redistricting is. I don't think there's any one way to do redistricting, even with the proposals we have today. I think there's a variety of ways to do redistricting, and I think the FEAC committee has worked hard, along with support from staff, to come up with what they see being the best way to do redistricting at this point. Really experiencing some new challenges as we approach redistricting this year. The Board's aware of the low birth rate, but the low birth rate for the last five years did not show up evenly across our county. We've seen a significant decrease in some of our schools of kindergarten, first grade over the last couple of years, and other schools where it's actually remained fairly consistent or even higher than some of the other areas. Made a complex factor to try to figure into what's going on with redistricting. I think pre-K, you know, has started to expand in the last two years, not predicted necessarily three or four years ago, and going forward, we've projected it would continue to increase. So we're trying to outguess where those spaces might be or what might happen two and three years down the road, or even 2018. The homeless factor, where we're trying to keep children in their home schools as much as possible for children that have lost their permanent residence. A new factor in the last two or three years is starting to crop up in the redistricting. The housing market, slow recovery for some areas, no recovery for some areas, and some areas starting to grow quite a bit. So all these things, along with what we saw happen in some of our apartment complexes, suddenly spiking with additional students, has made the FEAC's charge this time, I think, much more difficult than a number of years ago when things were on the growth spurt and challenging in a different way. But I think these new challenges are really tough to figure out. So with that brief introduction, I know Chad's plan today is to try to review the first three recommendation proposal, group proposals, that the Board saw at the last meeting. Just want to try to refresh your memory of those items and then respond to a couple of items that were shared by the Board at that time regarding three schools. And then Instruction offered some new questions to the FEAC, and they're going to share some information about possible responses for that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our co-chairs, Marion Taylor for some real introductory comments, and then they'll turn it over to Chad. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Mr. Oliver and I are pleased to present the realignment recommendations to the Board of Ed and to Dr. Wilcox as part of the process of redistricting two schools that are being closed and some other recommendations. We are pleased to hand this over to you to review and to continue this process. All of our meetings have been open to the public. They have been covered by our local media, and all of our minutes have been posted on the Board website.
One thing that, when we came before you in January, you talked about three different schools there, that being Williamsport Elementary and Pangborn and Lincolnshire. We looked at those different schools. I think we have a couple of things to present regarding particularly Pangborn, I think, that might provide some relief in that area. When we looked at Williamsport and Lincolnshire, I think we looked at those and then looked at the updated attendance numbers and the projected numbers, and I think we don't really have any major recommendation, other than to watch what's going to happen in those areas, that type of thing. So, I mean, that gives you a little bit of an idea as to what we're looking at and those types of things. One thing I will mention within the recommendations that are going to be presented, I mean, actually, the FEAC committee was unanimous in the recommendations, in all of the recommendations, really, and we feel positive about minimizing the impact on the number of students. Obviously, you're going to impact students in, and I know you all recognize this, when you close two schools and open a new school, but with what we're doing and the numbers and percentages in regards to state-rated capacities, I think we've come up with, and as Dr. Michael said, you know, there's not a perfect plan, but we feel really positive about what's being done and what those enrollment projections will be and how that, and obviously their projections, but hopefully they'll fall in line with that. And, you know, we feel good about those recommendations and what's been done within this report. So we're happy to hand it off to you, and I think Chad's going to do the presentation right now. So Chad, if you want to start that, that'll work out great.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Thank you, Mrs. Newby. So, just a brief summary. 2013, the committee received a charge from the Board of Education. It was three components. The committee provided a recommendation for enrollment relief to Pangborn Elementary. That part of the charge was completed. The remaining two components of the charge is develop an attendance zone for Jonathan Hager Elementary and other attendance zone realignments as necessary. Since January 2014, the committees met 11 times. They've looked at over 43 possible attendance boundary options. They presented two reports to the Board of Education, and the resultant report that you received contains 21 attendance zone realignment recommendations. Twenty of those recommendations are for elementary schools. One recommendation is for a middle school attendance area modification. During the process, the committees looked at two different official September enrollments. They've considered two different enrollment projection cycles, the latest, of course, being the one that the Board was presented here in February. They've looked at five years of historic enrollment through the GIS system for each of the recommendations and their consideration of those options. They've considered comments from the Board, and they've also considered requests that we received from instructional staff. The report, while very large, is organized in a way to make it a little easier, hopefully, to try to find the information you're looking for. There's an executive summary, the background, and it goes through the process and the methodology. But the report's actually divided into the six groups that the committee came up with to try to make it a little easier to figure out what move impacts what school attendance area and the resulting enrollment. So the Group 1 through 3 portion of the report is exactly the same as what was presented in January, with the exception that the latest and greatest information, the latest enrollment projections were included, the latest farm data was included, everything was updated to reflect all the information that we've had since that work session. In your report, Group 4 is new. It creates a separate K through 5 attendance zone for M.K. Dowell Elementary and establishes Funkstown Elementary School as a regional pre-K center and provides a little bit of enrollment relief to Bester Elementary School. Group 5 provides a little bit of enrollment relief to Ruth A. Monroe Primary and Eastern Elementary and brings the enrollment levels up at Greenbrier Elementary and Old Forge Elementary. Group 6 is one recommendation, and that is based off of one of the requests we received from Instruction, and it creates a separate K through 5 attendance zone for Eastern Elementary and a separate K through 5 attendance zone for Ruth A. Monroe Primary. And I'm going to be a little mobile. I'll walk up. So the chart that's included, it's actually expanded now to 18 elementary schools, two of which will close, Winter Street and Conica Jig Elementary, the new Jonathan Hager Elementary School. On a side note, if anyone finds West City in the report, if I made a mistake and missed it, I get docked a couple of dollars. So that's come through a couple of times, and I'm a little poor. But on this chart, and we'll go back to this at the end of the presentation, it's exactly the same as what we looked at in January. We have the projected 2018 enrollment for each of the schools that are impacted without any of the recommendations, and that's in the orange column. The next column over the green column shows the recommendation number and the total number of students that are recommended to go into that attendance zone. The pink column shows the recommendation number and the total number of students that are recommended to come out of that attendance zone. And then the math carries over into the two yellow columns where it shows the resulting 2018 projected enrollment and projected state-rated capacity. So a good example would be Pangborn Elementary School. Right now, without using any of the recommendations from the report, it's projected to be 741 students in 2018, or 99% of its state-rated capacity. And that does include the additional pre-K program. I believe it's 20 FTE students, Matt? Is that correct for next year? Starting next year, carried out through 2018. The FEAC came up with three recommendation areas out of Pangborn Elementary, Recommendation 13, Recommendation 18, Recommendation 19, which results in 66 students coming out of the current attendance boundary. And as you can see, the math across in the yellow columns, it results in a 675 total student enrollment, or 91% of state-rated capacity. And I'll bring this chart up at the end of the presentation. If you'd like to follow along, it is on page seven of your report, and I can certainly answer questions as we go through the presentation. Would it be easier if I, for everyone, if I maybe present it off of this board here in the back? That way, I'm not talking to everyone's backs. Will that help?
The two by the way.
Okay. So, and you can see the two screens beside you, so as I'm pointing, you can look at me and maybe do the crisscross. We'll try it this way. So, looking at the resulting Jonathan Hager Elementary Attendance Zone, I'm going to apologize to all you guys for having to turn around, but this might make it easier for everybody else. So, we'll go through the four recommendations, and like I said, we're just going to review the Group 1 through Group 3 recommendations of the report. The only thing that's been updated is the enrollment, but I want to go through, and that way, if any questions come up, we can address those. So, recommendation number one is two pieces of Salem Avenue Elementary School, and I'm going to show you these out of the Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone here in a minute. But recommendation number one sends 236 students from Salem Avenue over into the new Jonathan Hager Elementary School. This is the Hager's Crossing development. This is the Walmart, the Five Guys, we're trying to go to kind of often. This whole development area, which these students will be able to walk to the new Jonathan Hager Elementary School, and then this portion is below West Washington Street and West Washington Avenue down through the bottom of Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone. Recommendation number two is this area here, and it's from Conica Jig Elementary. As you can see, it kind of goes on both sides of 40 as it goes out to Rockdale Road out here, and that includes 82 K through 5 elementary students proposed to go to Jonathan Hager Elementary School. The third portion of the recommendation is this portion here from Lincolnshire Elementary School. It's basically at the northwesternmost corner of the existing Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone. And then recommendation number four, which is the southernmost portion of the Morgansville Attendance Zone, it's actually two blocks here. It accounts for about 23 K through 5 students. And while the parcels look a little jagged, they're following farm lines and various parcel areas along the road. So that's one of the things, the committee looked at various options. We looked at either following parcel lines or roads when we came up with the various cut areas. I'm going to go through each one of these again from the school. So if we need to come back, we can. It's no problem. But, for instance, this is the existing Conica Jig Elementary School. Very logical question is, what happens to Conica Jig Elementary School when you close it? This is recommendation number two, which we just looked at for the Jonathan Hager Elementary School, which is right here. This removes the main portion along 40 over to Jonathan Hager Elementary School. The second portion was recommendation number five, which sends 22 students to Clear Spring Elementary School. Just for point of reference, this is the landfill area right here. There's really no students. It kind of follows along the Conica Jig Creek. All of the students that live in this area have to come west to Rockdale Road before they can even get down to US 40, and all of these students actually currently attend Clear Spring Middle and Clear Spring High. So when the committee looked at it, they figured since they were heading west, Clear Spring Elementary was a very logical choice for these students to attend. Morgansville Elementary receives 53 students from the closing Conica Jig Elementary, and it's this portion here. Again, this is the Conica Jig Creek, and these students would be able to come out to Greencastle Pike and over to Morgansville Elementary to attend that school in the future. So, looking again, the current Conica Jig Elementary and the three recommendations that close that facility. Looking at the current Winter Street Elementary Attendance Boundary, there's actually two recommendations. Recommendation number seven assigns 170 students to Salem Avenue Elementary School, which is right up here. You can see it goes off of West Washington Street down to West Washington Avenue. I get them a little confused. West Washington Avenue comes here. West Washington Street comes here to this point. So the simple way to look at it, it's the areas of Winter Street south of 40. Those students would now be proposed to go to Bester Elementary, and that's the area in green. And again, these are from, these are the exact same areas from the last report that we looked at. Looking at Salem Avenue Elementary School, now this one's got multiple cuts you're going to see. The orange area, of course, is recommendation number one. The two areas that are proposed to go to the Jonathan Hager Elementary, you can see it's the two westernmost portions of the existing attendance zone. Recommendation number seven, from the Winter Street, the portion that we just talked about right here, would then go to Salem Avenue Elementary. And then recommendation number nine, which is this portion here, right down to Pennsylvania Avenue and North Burhans Boulevard, these students currently attend Eastern Elementary and Ruth A. Monroe Primary. The committee is recommending that these students return to Salem Avenue Elementary School, and there's approximately 112 K through 5 students in that area at this moment. So.
Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you go back to recommendation seven? How many of the Winter Street Elementary students, remind me, would be able to still walk to Salem or not? Will they all be transported?
There will be some that can walk. I don't have the exact number. I have to look at the, have to check with the Transportation Department on the safe routes to schools, but, go ahead. Yeah, in the discussions, and Randy's reminded me here from the FEAC meeting, it would be the majority of students from this area that we believe could walk to Salem. Now, that would be subject to review of crossing streets and the actual walking distance.
Because they're almost all walkers now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that was, okay. So then, parents would be able to still support their academic day?
Yes, ma'am.
Class, okay.
And we have Matt Semmer here, who's a former principal at Winter Street. I may call on him to help us with some answers as well.
He's shaking his head, so, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, looking at the current Clear Spring Elementary Attendance Zone, this is the current Clear Spring Elementary Boundary. You see much larger than the current Conica Jig Elementary Attendance Zone, and you're going to see that recommendation number five, this is the portion from the closing Conica Jig, that's proposed to be realigned into the Clear Spring Elementary Attendance Zone, accounts for approximately 22 K through 5 students. So this would be the proposed new Clear Spring Elementary Attendance Zone. The Morgansville Elementary Attendance Zone currently looks like this, and you're going to see two areas. The first area is the orange area, which is the southernmost portion of Morgansville. This is proposed to go to the new Jonathan Hager Elementary Attendance Zone, these two portions. This portion over here is recommendation number six, which, as you can see, this is the current Conica Jig Elementary Attendance Zone Boundary. This portion is recommended to be realigned back to Morgansville. Again, when the committee looked at it, they looked at some of the transportation routes and the ease of hopefully transporting some of those students, along with students that are currently transported to that facility. The current Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone kind of is a weird shape here, and as you can see, there's three recommendations that impact the current boundary. The first is recommendation number three, which takes the students on the northwesternmost portion to Jonathan Hager Elementary. The primary residential areas of this area is actually up here along West Washington Street and between 40. This is more of an industrial area down through here, so while it looks rather large, the residential portion's really confined up to the northern portion. The second recommendation is recommendation number 10. If you remember, this is the rail yard. There's no students over here on this little green triangle. This is just to create a contiguous boundary area, so that's zero K through 5 students there. And the third and final recommendation that impacts Lincolnshire Elementary is recommendation number 11, and it's the southeasternmost corner. It's the Oak Ridge area, which is located just out here, right past Interstate 70. It's recommending to send those students down to Fountain Rock Elementary to increase their projected enrollment in the coming years. Looking at the current Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone, this is how it resides today. And, of course, we'll be adding, through the report, recommendation number 11, which reassines the students from Lincolnshire Elementary into Fountain Rock. Just for point of reference, the Board's building's right about here, so we're sitting here at the moment. Again, this is the portion just above Interstate 70. And the second recommendation, to go into the Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone to increase their enrollment, is recommendation number 12, which reassines approximately 35 students from the Williamsport Elementary Attendance Zone. Looking at Williamsport Elementary, so we can see where those students are coming from, this is the current Williamsport Elementary Attendance Zone, and recommendation number 12 is right here. It's, as you can see, it's the easternmost portion, which will be able to come out along Sterling Road, right out the downs of O'Pike, and down to the Fountain Rock Elementary. The last elementary recommendation in the Group 1 through 3 is Potomac Heights. This is the current Potomac Heights Elementary Attendance Zone. And recommendation number 13 proposes to realign a small portion, approximately 31 K through 5 students, from Pangborn Elementary to Potomac Heights. That's in part to relieve the enrollment pressure at Pangborn Elementary that's anticipated and to increase the projected lower enrollment at Potomac Heights Elementary School. The final recommendation from the report you saw in January was a middle school boundary realignment. And if you look closely, you can see that there's a little blue island here in the middle of the current green area. That area currently attends Northern Middle School. So it's kind of an island inside of the existing boundary. One of the things from the FEAC was, hey, let's clean up this boundary line. Let's make it so everything is contiguous, so we don't have any islands, and that's why it's proposed to go to Western Heights Elementary School. So right now, students living here would go to Western Heights Elementary. Students living behind in the farm would go to Western Heights Elementary. This one little island would go to Northern Middle School, and that's one of the FEAC's recommendations to propose to send those to Western Heights, so they all can attend the same middle school. This recommendation, as long with the other recommendations, do not impact any of the high school boundaries. They're solely elementary school boundary adjustments, except for recommendation number 14, which does impact the middle school for those four students. That's the end of--
Do we want to pause a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions on this group of recommendations, one through three? Wayne?
Just go back, if you would, Matt, or, excuse me, Chad, back to the Fountain Rock and Williamsport.
Yes, sir.
There's a couple right there, I guess it is. There's a number they're going from, that's the one, 35 students from Williamsport to Fountain Rock, and I think that's one of the few places where there was much comment at all. I think, just so people know, these are all bused students as it is right now. They're bused to Williamsport, they will be bused to Fountain Rock.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I need. That's it.
Originally, when we proposed closing Winter Street, there was a hue and outcry from the folks in that area. And as I was looking at this the other day, you know, we've divided Winter Street into two sections, and one of their complaints had to do with the fact that many of them don't have cars and they need to be able to walk to their children's school. And I was wondering if it would be possible to put that other section of Winter Street, the 67 students that are slated to go to Bester, back with the rest that are going to Salem. That would bring, that would lower Bester's number down to about 86%. It would bring, I did have it figured out, I don't know where I've got my number now, what it would bring Salem up to. But in order to offset that, I had asked Chad if he could come up with the number, if you can look at the map. Oh, he's got it up there, thank you.
Yep.
Right now, the one boundary line is cut off on Nottingham, and I asked him if he moved it just one block closer to town and brought it down to Devonshire, how many additional students that would take that could be moved to Jonna-- wait a minute, now I'm confused.
Salem.
Salem. No. Because the Winter Street kids would be going to Salem. Be moved to, where do they go, Chad?
Jonathan Hager.
Jonathan Hager. If that would be too many, then to add Jonathan Hager, because I didn't know how many were in that, it's like 12 blocks this way, but one block this way.
Yes, ma'am. So, what I came in this morning early, and I'm going to switch out of the PowerPoint here in a second, again, I apologize for having to turn around here. The question was to see if there was possibility of-- The question was to see if there was possibility of taking this green portion here, that's proposed to go from Winter Street to Bester Elementary, and be able to send those to Salem Avenue Elementary with the rest of Winter Street. So this would all become yellow. So, in a nutshell, the resulting Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone would have this portion here turn yellow, and it would all go to Salem. Now, what Mrs. Fisher pointed out was, well, if you do that, that's gonna overpopulate Salem, so we need to pull some students out of Salem and possibly look at sending them to another school. What I went in and looked at was bringing this orange portion here just a little further east to see what the resulting impact would be on doing that. And I'm gonna apologize for the crude drawing that I'm gonna put up here. I went through and did it as quick as I could this morning. We're tapping into my computer downstairs. Here we go. So this is the current piece of Salem Avenue, the southwesternmost piece of Salem Avenue Elementary, that we're taking over to the new Jonathan Hager through recommendation number one. And I went through and hashed as best, as best I could. GIS is not a graphic program, so sometimes you have to save photos and, and kinda doctor them up to show the areas in other applications such as Microsoft Paint or Adobe. So I did my best to show two areas. So what we looked at was coming over to Devonshire Road, bringing that down, and then picking up Buena Vista Avenue, and then coming back through here. So essentially, turning this area of dark orange to here, orange, to pick up students to create capacity for this area that we just looked at to turn yellow and go to Salem Avenue Elementary. This area contains right now 30 K through five students. So what that does is that would put Jonathan Hager from 86% of state-rated capacity up to 92% of state-rated capacity. If you take these students from Salem, and then you add in the 67 students back from Winter Street, so you take out 30, you add in 67, that would put Salem Avenue up to 723 students, or 100% of state-rated capacity. And as Mrs. Fisher indicated, it would also bring Bester down to about 85% of state-rated capacity, because you're pulling those students out. So when I looked at that, I said, that's not good enough. That's, that's 100%, that's not what you're gonna look for. So I said, well, what if we came over and we went down Main Avenue, and we picked up this southern portion here? That would be an additional 33 students. What that would do is it would get Salem Avenue down to 690 students, which would be 95% of state-rated capacity, but it would push Jonathan Hager to 467 students, or 99% of state-rated capacity based on the current enrollment. The committee at one point in time had brought up that exact same point of trying to keep Winter Street together, and we looked at some various options.
That's what I was gonna ask the committee if you...
They're, they're shaking their heads.
Yes. Would you share with us your conversation?
I think we, we did look at that, we did look at moving that exactly in that way. I don't know if we picked up the second section there, but I know we looked at moving that there, and a couple of things that kinda ported me to that. Obviously, and one of our concerns, too, was if, obviously, if we were growing somewhat, put that near that capacity, and a new school will attract more families that will want to attend there, we could quickly be overpopulating Jonathan Hager.
And I guess the existing split of the Winter Street boundary, that lower section, would that, would they be walkers? Would they be able to walk as well if they did go to Salem?
No.
No. They're below that, that's, so they would be bused one way or the other?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think, Chad, they're about the same distance to Bester. I know you're trying to keep that whole block together, but they're about the same distance to Bester as they would be to Salem, as far as parents walking or need to walk their children if they've missed the bus or something like that. Matt, I think the Winter Street mobility rate, do you recall, excuse me, Winter Street mobility rate as far as children in and out in a given year, or across a five-year period, was...
40, 50%.
So, you have 20 children in your classroom, 40% turnover rate, eight or nine children aren't there at the beginning of the year, are there at the beginning of the year and aren't there at the end of the year, and eight more children come in. So we have a very mobile group of children in that area. Again, this goes back to, this is, what you're describing works as far as distance from Salem, things like that, but a couple of the points that were just brought up, oh my goodness. Jonathan Hager, we're concerned there, we still have houses to build out, so how full, it makes sense that that school should be able to run closer to 100% capacity, but we have more houses to build out in that area. And as Taylor pointed out, the attraction of a new school, might that generate more children, so we're a little bit worried there. One of the things I pointed out to Chad this morning about 6:30 was, you know, it's Salem right now, I think we only have about 20 FTEs, a pre-K, it's a Title I school. I don't have a magic or a crystal ball, but I would think we'd be adding additional pre-K there at some point, so if we run that school up close to 100%, and we have a couple special ed programs there right now, are we running the risk, as soon as we're able to add another pre-K or two to that school, we're pushing it on over? The other thing to consider, you know, while we're keeping Winter Street together, we're splitting more and more of the Salem Avenue. So it gets back to what I said earlier, there's no perfect redistricting plan. This will work in some fashion. Is it better, you know, or not than the current plan? I think it's up to the board to think about.
And I think one of our concerns as a committee was, we don't wanna have to keep coming back to redistricting schools every year because of overcapacity, and so we feel that this was the best recommendation, that we won't have to start fudging numbers, especially at those Title I schools. We don't want those kids to be moving back and forth all the time unless they have to within their families.
I understand, and I thank you all for that hard work, especially Chad. I know he's, I really taxed him yesterday.
There was no problem. I was happy to do it.
It's not, it's not a bad consideration at all. It just, it just starts to snowball into some other considerations the board will have to think about if they go that direction.
Mrs. Hirschman?
Yes, I had a question about the Salem numbers that I have on this sheet. I believe it comes out to state-rated capacity, I have your problem, as 725, and for 2015, it was 650, then projected 645, 630, 640, 635, 657. If you add that 67 to 650, you don't get to 100% yet. And I know that we had asked if there were any way to do redistricting as much as possible now in order to save in a few years, that, that would be beneficial, because we don't wanna keep moving students every three to five years someplace else. But I'm, I know that we lose some in, in situations, too, and they move, so it's really kind of a catch-22. And in addition to that one, which would, if you put those 67 in from that little area, it would still keep it under the maximum by, if my math is right, about eight, something like that. And then there were some others on here that I saw large discrepancies in the number that is projected and the state-rated, and nothing was done to those, such as Potomac Heights is, is down more than 75 students. And Old Forge, which I don't, I don't know, I, I tried to check on here, it would've helped, I think, if I had had which schools some of these would go to, that are butted up against the ones that are up for moving. So that kinda caused...
That may have caused confusion with this sheet. I believe the board, I mean, has seen this several times in the last couple of months. You need to remember, any school that was up here on this initial chart that has a recommendation, as soon as that, that school shows up on this chart that's up on the slide right now, you need to ignore these numbers altogether, because this chart supersedes this chart assuming that the recommendations are adopted.
Right.
So this is what the committee used to work from, to say...
I understand what you're saying, but that would've been helpful if we could've looked at that and said that, because I'm going by this one, which obviously has some places that, there are schools that are down and have not been addressed.
Well, so your example of Old Forge, there's a number on here that indicates there's room at Old Forge. This number changes as a result of a recommendation coming up in a few minutes that moves children from Pangborn to Old Forge.
Oh, yeah. Right, yes. And I don't know how many are moved.
Right, we're gonna share, we'll share that.
I guess that's, that's what, that's what would change the number, but many of them are very low, and I don't, I didn't see anything that indicated there were that many students.
And I think you can see up on this chart, Chad can point out, Potomac Heights is another area that we just moved children in this group, one through three recommendations, from Pangborn to Potomac Heights, which would change that.
But wasn't enough, is, I guess, what I'm actually looking at, because if, if it moves them from 60% to 70-something, then that doesn't seem like that's enough. We, we should be putting more there and less, especially Pangborn, I think, is the one that's very loaded right now, so...
Right. So let's, let's take a minute and look, so the Potomac Heights number right here, the 182, that matches the sheet, and that's what they are currently projected to be, 66% of state-rated capacity, which you mentioned in 2018. Going over the column, it, it has recommendation number 13, which is that little piece that comes down, counts for 31 students to go into that number, so that adds to the 182 number, and as you mentioned, it brings the enrollment up to 78%.
78, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So I must have, at that time, been looking at that also, because when you have a school at, yes, and 75 for Greenbrier, when you have some that are down that low, and you have some that are up to 99, it seems like there should be some way of adjusting that in order to make sure that nobody's at 99.
Yes, ma'am.
Because in a year, they could be, again, over state-rated capacity. So I'm, I'm curious to know why 78 and 75 were not, percent were not...
Increased.
Increased.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
It is an excellent question. In fact, the committee, and please chime in if you...
Yeah, we, we actually looked at moving some more students from, it was from the eastern...
Pangborn.
Pangborn, and there was a whole block of students, so we looked at, you know, making the block this big, and then this big, and it, the numbers, it would be overwhelming for Potomac Heights. One of the things to consider about Potomac Heights is it's an open school. You can't, you know, just put a lot of students in there. The facility wasn't built to accommodate overcapacity. So if you look there at the bottom, we actually wanted to move the line down farther and take those students, and I think it was like 60 or 70 more students, which would over...
Populate.
Populate Potomac Heights. So we, we did look at trying to adjust those, those boundary lines to put more students in Potomac Heights.
One of the other thing, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
One of the other things that we did bring up, and when we looked at Potomac Heights, was, you know, of course, we went through two enrollment projection cycles, and we heard Deanna talk a little about, is whether it's a trend or is it a one-year bubble. Potomac Heights this year, their enrollment was down significantly from where it was last year. She, that was one of the areas, she's predicting that the low birth rate is gonna impact more severely than some of the other areas. We're gonna watch that pretty closely. I'm not so convinced it's gonna get all the way down to 68% if nothing happens out there in the future, but I'm, I'm not the expert. I'm not, you know, I'm not as versed or as experienced as what she is in looking at these areas, but it's something I did identify to her, and I certainly brought up that concern to the FEAC, because I, I wanted to share that insight, and I think it's possible that we could see that 68% go a little higher, maybe be 80 or so, and, which would result in that 78 potentially being a little higher, too. But that's just my opinion, that, I have no way to justify that. Again, she, she's the expert, I'm just going off of my gut when I look at seeing the class enrollment decline, and I'm saying, boy, that just seems like an awful, awful big drop for us on one year of a lower kindergarten enrollment.
Well, I think that was one of the reasons that I was concerned that only that many were included, and even if the boundary extended to the terrace, I don't know how many that would pick up, but it certainly doesn't seem like, with that particular street, there would be a huge influx of students, so if it even went down that side. But it would give Potomac Heights a little higher percentage than the 75 or 78 that they're working on right now.
Yes, ma'am. If, if you look at the, the last meeting minutes, you'll actually see the area that they described, it's shown where it goes and encompasses this whole block here. One other thing the committee looked at, it, it did pick up a fair number of students. It is a pretty dense populated area, but the committee didn't wanna create a block-wide, by three blocks over, area that would be just attending Pangborn Elementary, and then everything else here would be going to Potomac Heights. That was one of the topics that came up, and I think that's identified in the meeting minutes as well. But we could certainly go back and bring back additional information.
Yes, because the, the ones that you did mark off, they were Pangborn?
Yes, ma'am.
So they are in Potomac Heights. So if you drop that down even, like to Broadway, maybe not the whole section, or if you went up the terrace, it would give Potomac Heights, well, I don't know who's on the other side of the terrace, what's, what school is that?
Fountaindale.
Fountaindale.
Fountain, Fountaindale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, and that would help if, if we had this one.
Yep, we could certainly bring that information back.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that. But it just seems like that we could easily, easily find some to add to Potomac Heights when it's down to 78.
Ma'am.
And then that other one.
I had similar questions with regard to the possibility of giving some relief to Pangborn, and, and I think Mary has answered my question. My question was, why not extend that line to at least Broadway? But if you're saying that that's densely populated, then I understand that you'd have way too many kids...
And there was no way to evenly divide out that whole section, that we would take, we would take you, but we wouldn't take you, or we would take, you know, this much, and it just didn't, it didn't work out. And again, would we have to do that again, you know, and divide neighborhoods again?
Provide you this, but there was 104 students. We did look at coming all the way.
And I think the functional nature is one that we have been struggling with at many schools throughout the county with that remaining open space, where 80% may seem low, but functionally, they're just barely able to make that work constructionally, so I think that's an important aspect. And I've forgotten how many open space schools we, elementary, we still have.
Eleven, maybe, I'm guessing. We'll go over that one, then we have the...
So that may be, I, very valid point.
I know.
Yes, Mr. Oliver?
It's...
As much as possible, and as light shade and...
I will do my best. You can see, they actually did look exactly what you're saying, though, we looked at sectoring that off, and then it created the blocks, there was a one-block-wide piece here, and the committee said, nah, we don't wanna, we don't wanna recommend that, and that's why they invited it.
And that's a well, we, but I know that if, if we do something that probably Potomac Heights, not only will it be under, under the bed, but it also may be to teachers, and they're not happy with that.
And the only way to deal with that would be to add walls, and that's, I'm not sure if we have...
There are walls, there are...
Preferable.
Art walls.
Yeah, exactly, and it's still problematic, so that's something we...
Potomac Heights is one of those tough schools, it's kind of a bit of a circle, a pie shape, and just strange, you know, our desire there would make it a three-round school somehow, but I think it's pretty limited on some property issues there and things like that. The two-round schools are really tough, because we get those bubbles that go to, you need a two-and-a-half-round type grade, and then another grade's like one and a half, because, you know, the bigger the school is, the more evenly it seems to divide out, or the more you can kinda shift staff around, but we keep falling between that two-round, three-round, or one-round, two-round in some of our smaller schools, and it makes it challenging to figure out staffing as far as efficiency standpoint. So we appreciate comments, and certainly we'll explore anything that the board likes us to explore.
Remember the concept of local-rated capacity, too, which is 90% of state-rated capacity, which is embedded in the adequate public facilities ordinance. The local-rated capacity of Potomac Heights is 246 versus what's listed, the state-rated at 274. If you took the, the numbers that the committee put into Potomac Heights, it would then be at about 84% of capacity, of local-rated capacity. So that's just another thing to consider.
That's another excellent point. Any other questions on this first group? Beth?
Thank you. If, if...
If Pangborn is overcapacity, and it looks like it's going to be at 91% with the projections in 2018, has anyone looked at the Paramount numbers? I don't see Paramount being adjusted here.
You're absolutely right. Paramount was not included in that chart because it was not impacted by any of the recommendations. But Paramount is currently projected to be about 319 students in 2018, which is about 78% of its state-rated capacity. Now, that is also one of the schools that Public Pathways looked at and said, boy, we think that the lower birth rate in kindergarten enrollment could impact it. They currently have a couple of class sizes, I believe, of 70. The rest of the classes are in the 40 to 50 range. And as she carries her projections out over time, those 70 classes migrate through and other classes of 40, 50 come in. So from two years ago, when the first piece from Pangborn went to Paramount, there was concerns of Paramount possibly going over 100% of state-rated capacity. That was one of the discussion points that we had, and some of the concerns that were addressed since those two years. It looks like the projections are possibly trailing down. Now, are they, are they going to be 100% accurate? I don't know if it'll quite fall as much as what it's showing, but it could. And it could go down to the 78%.
Well, if it's at 78%, then why don't we take the section that has Cortland and move that up to Paramount? Because that is more closer to that school. And that would relieve the overcrowding there at Pangborn.
We discussed and looked at that option. And one of the problems is, is there's about 100 and some remaining students in Cortland Manor, give or take. And that would have put Pangborn potentially over its state-rated capacity. So, oh, gee, I'm sorry. Thank you. Paramount over its state-rated capacity. It has a state-rated capacity of 409 students. Just the simple math, it's projected to be 319 in 2018. If you just took the 100 students today and said there'll be 100 students two years from now, that would put them up to 419 students. Now, if the projections go the other way and they go down further, you would have the capacity at Paramount to do that. But if the-
Like, that's the trend, and it is going down.
Yes, sir. It does go down. It kind of, in the out-years, it comes back up. If you notice, if you look out to 2024, it goes back up to 388. But that is based on projected development. And that's, like we said, at this time in the economy, it's hard to say if that'll actually come in. That also is assuming a rebound in the birth rates and the kindergarten students. It's kind of a guess. It's kind of a gamble.
And it's not two, three to five years away either. It's much more in the distance.
Yes, ma'am.
So obviously, we have to do some redistricting eventually.
Right. Right.
So I think there's potential, you know, to look at some more of Cortland, but it would be difficult to have all of Cortland go to Paramount right now. And again, we're just back two years ago when we were projecting Paramount to be over 100% capacity. So what Chad started to describe, we have classes there of 77 children. I think it's like third grade, second, third grade, and their kindergarten in first grade because the slow birth rate has dropped off down into the 50s. And that's what Deanna's projecting will go all the way through there. What if that changes and kids, you know, start coming back in the 60s and 70s in the kindergarten range? Or some of the other things build out or something like that? It's the hedge we're trying to make on some of these projections. But I think there is an opportunity to take maybe a portion, an additional portion of Cortland. Part of Cortland right now goes to Paramount. Is there some other line in there that we should move, but not all of Cortland, to also go to Paramount?
How many of the students that are in Cortland now go to Paramount?
Around 50, a little over 50. I know we're right on the cusp of having to add another bus, are we not? One of the things we looked at when we took the first piece was it's one bus full of students out of Cortland at the moment going over to Paramount. So that was part of the rationale on how many students we picked the first time because we didn't want to have to add the cost of having another bus that's currently taking them to Pangborn. You almost have to have two buses for the current, one bus that goes down to Pangborn. We were trying to keep them in numbers of around 50 to 100.
Could students from Paramount be redistricted to another school on the other side? In other words, if we took all of Cortland, could we move some to another school on the other side?
From Paramount to bring all of Cortland back?
Probably. I'm not sure.
We could certainly investigate that. We could look at some of the northeastern portions possibly going to Old Forge to create some capacity. But it starts, the boundary starts coming in pretty close to the school.
Well, or on one of the other sides. I mean, I don't know what schools are on those sides specifically, but Morgansville or something else the other way. So that, so that, and same with Pangborn. If you move some out from one of the other sides and move some of those in, you may have more room. But also, we had, we have several schools that are over state capacity. What happens when that occurs?
Well, that's part of the redistributing efforts to try to, you know, minimize that the best we can.
I mean, we have some at like 107, and we have some at 101, and so on.
If you slide to the right-hand side of that chart, you'll see the yellow. That's the impact of the rest of the redistributing.
Right, right. But I'm saying, if we end up with somebody just over 100, do we get fined or sued or closed or thrown out? Okay, all right.
Our goal would be to try to keep it under.
Everybody under 100, absolutely.
We're trying to watch how pre-K, you know, moves into these various districts and things like that.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And one of our considerations as a FIAC committee was to really look at the number of students impacted in this redistributing process. We know that we had to realign the boundaries for the new Jonathan Hager, and we didn't want to have an impact of lots of students. So our recommendations impact about, what, 1,100, 1,200 students? And when we start moving more, we start impacting more and more students. And also looking at what middle school do they attend? We really wanted to make sure that those students that were realigned stayed where they would go for middle and high school. And sometimes we have to always look at, what are we going to do with those kids down the road?
And that's good if that's possible. But I think that's one of the reasons we ask to have everything that needed done, done at one time. Because to have students moved in one year and then three years later, uh-oh, we have way over state capacity, then you have to move them again. So even if it means more students moving now, it may mean less movements later. And I think that's what we were concerned about.
Right. And I don't think we, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
I don't think we disagree with that concept. Couple other factors that my mind goes to when we work through this. Our schools were state-rated capacity, and we're going to talk about that maybe later in the presentation. Sometimes the state-rated capacity number is not a nice even divide of a two-round or a three-round school. You know, our schools were built at some point either off of, you know, how many children were in the area, or maybe based off of a two- or three-round concept with one kindergarten or two kindergarten. Kindergarten now has gone to all-day kindergarten. And then we have this potential of pre-K getting pushed in, either it's half-day or whole-day. So we're also trying to watch some of these numbers to make some logical divides of a two-round or three-round school so we're not caught in this, this middle issue of, you know, splitting the teacher, splitting the grade, although some of that's working out well for us along this line as well. The other challenge is, is this thing grows bigger and we try to fix it all, it actually increases our risk of being wrong. The bigger we make it, while we think we can fix it for today, we're fixing it based on the information we know today. At one point, we were looking for property for a North County school because of a number of developments that potentially were going to be built out around the Paramount area. If that suddenly comes back on the radar, I think there's about 200 houses in a concept phase, somebody suddenly pushes forward with those 200 houses, we suddenly pick up about 80 kids, and the numbers we see in the out-years for Paramount fill back up. So it's just a, it's kind of a gamble. The bigger we make it, and we think we have it fixed based on projections, we're assuming our projections are 100% correct, we're assuming we know everything about pre-K, we're assuming we know everything about enrollment and housing developments and birth rates, and we just, we're just not there. It's just not a science.
True, no matter how you do it.
It is. It is. So we're, I think the FIAC approached it from a standpoint of trying to be cautious, trying to make sure, based on the information we know, we're getting people in the right range, trying to look at it from efficiency of staffing. But all of your ideas are, they're not bad ideas at all. They're just, you know, potentially sometimes we expand this, we're increasing our risk.
I think one of the long dormant developments in that north area, Chad was contacted by one of the attorneys representing that development recently. Haven't seen anything in paper, but at least they're starting to think about it again. So it's just, I think it was the Rose Hill, maybe.
It's the one Ryan, Dan Ryan, I think, is building.
Right.
Or owns. They have the rights to it.
Nothing's been started or submitted to the county.
I see the sign.
Right.
Which is, you know, they're sitting there, and those land purchasers are burning holes in their pockets. And they want to build something at some point. So I, I think.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
I think Boyd made some really, really good points in some of the things that were on my mind. But as I look at a lot of these numbers, and particularly the newer schools, how many, how many elementary schools have we built in the last 10 years? What, six, five?
Jonathan Hager will be the sixth.
Six. Those schools typically, if you look at Pangborn, Rockland, Ruth Ann Monroe, Morgansville, Bester. All of those are designed, handle higher capacity than our older schools. They handle it much more easily. If you talk to Pangborn's principal, he will tell you, we can handle 100%. You know, and I think that's probably true with any one of those six, five schools. But they can handle that 100%. Fountain Rock cannot. Or, excuse me, Potomac Heights cannot. Paramount would have difficulty. And a lot of the other ones, you know, Clear Spring, for God's sake, would have horrible time trying to deal with those types of capacity issues. So, you know, if, I don't get, I don't get particularly disturbed when I see Bester at 97% or, you know, or some of the others. I would get very concerned if Potomac Heights was at 90%. I think instructionally, they're going to be impacted. And obviously, I think that's the most important thing. I don't think there's anything perfect. I think that what I've seen of 1 through 3, you know, were very good recommendations. And they all made sense in that they had boundaries that made sense. You know, we weren't looking for a pocket of students. I will tell you, Mike, with Cortland, that place is a nightmare to predict, and it's going to be for some time. Because we've been tricked now for the last four years with apartments. Apartments are producing more students than we ever thought they would, or that historically showed that they would. And with Cortland and the turnover of occupants in those apartments, it's hard to tell how many kids are going to come out of there weekly, let alone five-year projection. You know, and there are other apartments being built. And if, you know, if the same thing happens in those apartments, you know, all bets are off. So I don't think we're going to be able to fix anything. As Boyd said in particular, I don't think we're going to be able to fix this and not have to worry about it for 10 years. I think it's going to be a nightmare for, over and over again. And these guys will come back, hopefully, and, and work on it again as it occurs. I really do like the first three recommendations of what I've seen so far. So, thank you.
Hold thought just a moment, Mr. Hirschman. We are into our first hour, and we just completed the first three sections. So, Mrs. Hirschman, I'm happy to, if you have a brief comment on this group, and then I would like to move ahead because we need to be sure we have enough time.
I just wanted to give some information that I'm often out at Potomac Heights because a friend of mine is the art teacher, and I talked with many of the staff. And all of those feel that they could handle more students than are there. So however many, the under they are, they are eager to have more and to be closer to maximum capacity because they do not want to lose teachers. And so I feel I need to pass that information on. So I haven't talked to anyone who did not want more students at Potomac Heights. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Chad?
Okay.
We'll move on to group four.
I'll move back here, just so everyone doesn't have to turn around. We'll go through the group four recommendations. I'm sorry, you guys have to turn around again. So this is, this is new. This is in this report, which wasn't in the January report. This is the current Bester Elementary attended zone. And before I get to the yellow square, I'll just briefly go through, this is the current recommendation number eight, the 67 students that we talked about a little bit ago from Winter Street proposed to come into Bester. This is recommendation 10. Again, this is the rail yard. This is no student area, proposed to come from Lincolnshire into Bester. It creates a contiguous boundary for Bester Elementary. One of the things the committee looked at when we went back and reviewed the updated enrollment projections, based on some of the kindergarten growth that we saw this year, was the committee said, boy, that is a potential for Bester to go over 100% capacity. We should probably make a recommendation to potentially provide a little bit of enrollment relief for that school if the projections hold true. The projections may not hold true, but just in case, we're going to hedge our bets and we're going to make a recommendation to help provide some enrollment relief. So what it is in your report is recommendation number 15, and it reassigned approximately 36 K through 5 students out of Bester Elementary into the M.K. Dow Funtstown Elementary Attendant Zone. So I'm going to click back. This is the current Bester, and you're going to see the two pieces that are added. And this portion right here is recommended to be realigned into the M.K. Dow and Funtstown Elementary Attendant Zone. So just for point of reference, this is City Park Drive. So right up here is the pond on City Park. If you come past the pond, right on your right, there's a street. It's proposing to take these students that currently are bused to Bester, and they would come out and now attend M.K. Dow Elementary, which is right down here. The students along West Wilson Boulevard, they currently attend M.K. Dow. So these students would be able to attend right with them. The boundary follows Virginia Avenue down to West Howard Street. It goes between an alley. One of the things the committee looked at and actually revised on the recommendation was originally this boundary line was going to split Guilford Avenue. And in looking at it, they said, boy, that doesn't make sense to have kids on one side of the street in this area go to one school, and kids on the other side of the street go to another school. So they moved the boundary back to the alley, and that way, kids facing each other across the street would still attend the same school. And then it does follow West First Street over to the existing M.K. Dow boundary here, which goes along South Potomac Street. So that's recommendation number 15. This is the current M.K. Dow Elementary Attendance Boundary. So we're going to show you what happens to M.K. Dow. The first one that's going to pop up is the recommendation 15 that we just talked about. So this would now be added into M.K. Dow's Attendance Zone. But this portion over here, which follows down on South Frederick Street, down to Funtstown, here's the creek, the committee is recommending to reassign 104 of those students over to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary. We're going to show you. So this black line here is the current M.K. Dow Elementary Attendance Zone. You can see it kind of wraps around the Bester Elementary Attendance Zone. These students currently travel around Bester Elementary down and over here to M.K. Dow. The committee looked at that and said, boy, that would be a really easy, close transportation route for those students to be able to come out on Mount Etna Road, over to Yale Drive, and to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary, instead of having to drive all, all the way around the existing district. For point of reference, the old board office, now Transportation, new Transportation Department is located right here. All of this area right down through here is industrial. That's the fire department, training area. It's a bunch of business areas, the HBP's back down through here. This is the first portion of that area that's recommended to go to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe on recommendation 16. The second portion is the Funtstown area. And this area actually follows the creek down through here. The, for point of reference, this is the one-lane bridge that you currently have to cross over as you go through Funtstown to come up on East Oak Ridge. So when the committee looked at this area, they said, boy, this would be a close, a close route to be able to come out, hop on South Edgewood Drive, cross 40, and right up here to Yale Drive to the two facilities. It would be a very simple commute, and it would make sense to send those students to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe. So pulling out this portion of the existing M.K. Dow Elementary Attendance Zone through recommendation 16, bringing in this portion of Bester to M.K. Dow through recommendation portion of Bester to M.K. Dow through recommendation 15, it creates a new M.K. Dow Elementary Attendance Zone that looks like this. One of the requests that we heard from instructional staff was they asked the committee to look at creating a K-5 Attendance Zone for M.K. Dow and still providing the magnet program that it currently has. They wanted to make sure they could keep the magnet program, but they also wanted to see if they could turn it into a K-5 facility instead of those students attending Funtstown Elementary for their, their kindergarten class years. So recommendation 17 brings 34 kindergarten students in this area that would currently receive their kindergarten services at Funtstown. They would now receive it at M.K. Dow. So it would become a true K-5 facility. And then Funtstown Elementary would become a regional pre-K center, probably similar to what Robinwood, I guess, used to be. It would be able to provide potential flexibility for pre-K classes to other adjacent facilities or any other facility, really, in the, in the area that may require additional space for pre-K pending future legislation, pending a designated need from instruction. It could, it could serve a multitude of purposes. That's the end of group four.
Chad, I think part of our recommendation for group four was that all of those recommendations within group four need to happen in order to make this all work. So those would be all recommendations that need to stay together.
Correct.
Any questions on this group?
I'm making you guys turn around.
Any additional comments from FEAC?
One of the other things we had looked at too, even from a transportation standpoint, we were kind of making it so there wouldn't be buses as much going across that one lane bridge there at Funtstown. So it alleviated a situation that likewise.
Does there's, can back up on that one? All right. Chad, group five?
I'll move on to group five. So we've been talking about Pangborn Elementary. This is the current Pangborn Elementary Attendance Zone. You can see the existing shape. This is the piece that went to Paramount that we discussed earlier as part of the first component of the charge. And you're going to see a couple of things pop up. So this is the current recommendation area to go to Potomac Heights that we discussed a little bit ago for 30 students to go to Potomac Heights. There's two additional recommendations to provide enrollment relief to Pangborn that are coming back through this group five. The first is recommendation number 18, which takes this community over to Old Forge Elementary. And I'll show you a close-up of that community here in a second. The second recommendation is recommendation number 19, which reassigned a small area here on the southeastern area of Pangborn over to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe. And we'll, we'll explain what the committee's thought process was on these two areas. So the portion to go to Old Forge Elementary is basically a small community that's located directly off of Jefferson Boulevard. It's, it's an enclosed community. You can see, this is Robinwood Drive. So as it comes out, there's the gas station right here as you come out to Jefferson. These students, I'm going to flip back, these students currently travel Jefferson Boulevard over to Pangborn Elementary. Based on discussions with our Transportation Department, it would be just as simple for these students to go over and travel to Old Forge Elementary and help bring up the enrollment at that facility. You'll notice that's one of the ones I think we discussed earlier that's projected to be down in the future years. We thought it would not only provide some enrollment relief to Pangborn, but it would also increase the projected enrollment at Old Forge. The second piece is actually a very small piece that's projected to come from Pangborn Elementary to go to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe. So I'm going to flip back through here real fast. You'll see, you'll say, boy, that's an awful small little corner. All of these 12 students right here are currently bused to Pangborn Elementary School. And when the committee was looking at this area, one of the things and one of the components of the charge that the committee looked at was the middle and high school attendance boundaries. So if you follow this red line here, everything to the north of this red line goes to Northern Middle and North Hagerstown High. Everything to the south of this line goes to E. Russell Hicks and South Hagerstown High. This black line right here is the current Pangborn Elementary Attendance Zone Boundary. So these students in this area, the only 12 students at Pangborn Elementary that matriculate to E. Russell Hicks and South Hagerstown High. The committee looked at this and said, boy, it would just make sense to go ahead and pick this area up, send it to Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe and clean up one of the feeder patterns as those students matriculate on through their middle and high school careers. Again, it's a small area, but it was one of the, the discussions and topics of the committee.
Any questions?
I'm just pausing because this is a little different slide than the other ones I've been going through. Just give a chance. We can always come back. So this is the current Old Forge Elementary Attendance Boundary. You can see it's one of our larger elementary attendance boundaries. Of course, it's bordered by Smithburg and Cascade. And what you're going to watch, and I'll flip back through this a couple of times. You may want to look at the two side screens because it's very small, but in this corner here, you're going to see a very small little area come up. That's the community that contains recommendation number 18 or 23 K-5 students. It's very small. Again, it's right by Jefferson Boulevard. It fits into the existing boundary and it's, I'll flip one more time here just so you can see it. It's just a little area, but it did encompass the whole community. Looking at the current Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern Elementary Attendance Zone, this is the current Attendance Boundary. This is how it is set up, and there's going to be a couple of blocks on here that we'll go through. So let me start from the beginning. When we reviewed group three, we had recommendation number nine, this area here, that's west of North Burrhands Boulevard, go to Salem Avenue Elementary School. This, this portion comes from Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe over to Salem Avenue Elementary right here. Recommendation 16, which was part of group four, comes from M.K. Dow and Funtstown into the Eastern Ruth Ann Monroe Attendance Boundary. So again, this is the portion up by Frederick Street that wraps around Bester and down and all of Funtstown that follows the creek would now go to Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern. And then this is the little portion of students from Pangborn that matches the current middle and high school boundary line to clean up one of the feeder patterns right up in this area for 12 students. Recommendation number 20 is this portion down here, which is basically the Blackrock Development, and there's about 42 K-5 students in this area. The committee's proposing to realign these students to Greenbrier Elementary School. Greenbrier is another one of those schools that has a very low projected enrollment. This not only brings their projected enrollment up, but it provides some enrollment relief to, to Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern. One of the things, as point of reference, you see this area here, that's the proposed Blackrock PUD. That's a very large development that's planned in the future. We're not sure when it's going to take off. We've heard rumblings, but we haven't seen any movement on the year. But if you're wondering what this particular finger is that comes down through here, that's what encompasses that area. And the committee chose to leave that into the Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern Attendance Zone as part of their recommendation. Now, one of the things I want to show you about this area.
On that area, what are, is that about 600 homes? What are, what's the project?
589, I believe. And that was the last concept plan that we had heard, that those concept plans will change. Every once in a while, I'll get something from Steve and he'll say, well, it's 593 homes, or it's 602. They change it. They'll, they'll add a town home or a single family.
But it's a mixture of single family plus condominium.
I think single and family, or townhomes, I believe. Yes, ma'am.
Way back, I thought it was majority of it was single family because that's what was selling at the time when they were proposing it.
Did they go into that more dense, mixed?
I think, like Chad's saying, they, they're kind of morphing to follow the market a little bit.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things that the committee looked at at this area was the same thing as the area for the previous recommendation from Pangborn. The red line, again, indicates the middle and the high school boundaries. So all the areas to the north and east of this red line here attend Smithburg Middle and Smithburg High School when they go on to middle and high. All the students to the east of the red line here go to E. Russell Hicks Middle and South Hagerstown High when they migrate on to middle and high school. All the area down here goes to Boonsborough Middle and Boonsborough High. So when the committee was looking at increasing the enrollment at Greenbrier and decreasing some of the projected enrollment at Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern, they looked at this area because these students already attend Boonsborough Middle and Boonsborough High, and they put emphasis on sending those students on to the middle and high school grades with other students that would now be attending Greenbrier Elementary. Again, it was an attempt to clean up one of the feeder patterns as we move forward. Now, one of the things that is documented in the FEAC minutes and is brought up in the report is this area was redistricted during the last redistricting. I believe it was in 2011. It was actually one of two areas that was redistricted out of Greenbrier to create capacity. At the time, Greenbrier, you guys are going to have to help me out with the date. I know it had been projected to go up to like almost 140% of state-rated capacity and had
Five years ago.
13 consecutive years of, 12 or 13 consecutive years of being over state-rated capacity. At the time, the two recommendations took about 100 students out. We had a bunch of developments that were projected to go into that facility. The other portion that was recommended out was above the Smithburg line. That was part of the cleaning up feeder pattern for Greenbrier. The one good thing about this area, though, is when I went back and I reviewed that, at the time, there were 50 K-5 students. So that's showing that this area is staying pretty consistent with total quantity of students that are being generated out of this development, which is a little bit reassuring. We don't have to maybe worry about it going up to all of a sudden being 70 students or maybe down to 10 students in the near future. It seems like it's staying pretty consistent with the amount of students that's coming out of the area. But that is indicated in the report, and that is something that the committee discussed, and it's also recorded in the minutes.
Chad, Greenbrier is another one of those schools that the kindergarten classes just dropped off.
Yes, sir.
I mean, this has gone to completely different than what it had been for a long time.
So this is the current Greenbrier Elementary Attendance Zone, and you're going to see right up here, this is recommendation number 20, which would now bring this up. And again, this matches the Boonsborough Middle, Boonsborough High School, middle and high school attendance boundary and creates a little bit more of a feeder pattern consistency in that area.
Okay, we'll pause, Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, just, I know this information's there, but just refresh me. What impact does that have on farm and, and does it have any Title I or farm impact on Ruth Ann Monroe? Because that, that one segment that you're talking about, the, the Blackrock segment is obviously, there are no farm students in there.
Very few. Yes, sir. I got to turn to the page in the report.
I know it's in there, Chad. I just.
It's okay.
Maybe you could.
163.
What is it, Mary?
163.
Believe it's 151?
Oh.
Oh, wait. No, no, no. You, you were right. I was, I was, sorry. I was the wrong section. 182. What that does is that puts, again, in conjunction with all the recommendations. So right now, for Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe, there's four recommendations that impact that attendance area. But what that does for Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern is it takes Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern from 77%, Ruth Ann Monroe from 77% to...
71?
77.3 to 77.2, and it takes Eastern from 71 to 70.9. And while that doesn't make sense because you're saying you're taking out a, a, a non-farm area, you also have to remember, we're taking out some other high farm areas with some, say, recommendation number nine in some of those zones. So that's how the numbers balance out for that particular area. Greenbrier Elementary would go from 30, let's see, from 38.7 to 34.9 with this recommendation. So to your point, this is a low farm area. It will reduce the farm rate at Greenbrier. At Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe, while you would think intuitively, because I'm taking out a low farm rate area from the Eastern Ruth Ann Monroe Attendance Zone, I would see that rate go up. Because of some of the other recommendation areas and their associated farm rates is actually end up being kind of a, almost a wash. Wash. Why, West Virginia R is coming out. Sorry.
Dr. Harding's, did you have your hand up earlier? Okay, Ms. Fisher.
While we're stopped, one quick question. You, you indicated some elementary boundary changes that impact middle and or high schools. When you do that, do you consider the number changes at the middle and high schools?
So it actually doesn't impact the numbers at the middle and high schools. It just impacts the elementary schools, the number of middle and high schools that they feed to. So Ruth Ann Monroe, and I'll, I'll go back.
Feeder pattern split of the elementary. It's, it's not a boundary change of middle school or high school. So that little block that we had that was in one, well, take this as probably the easiest example.
So these 42 students, this is the current, this black line here, this is the current Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Attendance Zone. These students attend Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary today. The fifth graders, next year, they'll go to Boonsborough Middle and Boonsborough High School. What the committee is proposing, to send those students to Greenbrier Elementary School, and all of Greenbrier Elementary School currently attends Boonsborough Middle and Boonsborough High School. So whether this recommendation is implemented or not, these students are still going to attend Boonsborough Middle or Boonsborough High. What this recommendation will do, though, is these students will now migrate on to Boonsborough Middle and Boonsborough High with other students, instead of being the only students coming out of that, that particular grade. So the, the situation I used for the previous one at Pangborn, in fact, when we discussed this at the committee, the 12 students in this area, if you divide that by six grades, you could assume that there's two students per grade. That means in all of Pangborn, two fifth graders are going to leave everybody else they're friends with and head over to E. Russell Hicks and South Hagerstown High School. That's where they're going to migrate to. All their other friends are going to go to Northern Middle and North Hagerstown High. This just kind of made sense to go ahead and, and clean that up and, and create a little bit more continuity. So the nutshell is it does not change the middle or high school numbers. It just changes the number of feeder schools for each elementary. It's a, it's a good question, though.
Any, are you finished at this point with that group, Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll just ask one.
Yes.
You said the last round of Attendance Zone realignment was 2011?
Right.
So are there students who are in this proposed Attendance Zone who would have already been shifted once and now they're being shifted again, or are those students all moved their way through the elementary school?
If this is implemented, implemented, excuse me, in 2016, the students that would be fifth graders would have been kindergartners when this was implemented. So they wouldn't have actually ever attended Greenbrier Elementary. They would have been the first group in, but the prior year, they should have been going to Greenbrier. So you could say yes and you could say no would be, be correct. The, the only thing that I think typically is done is I believe there is a, in past practices, a
Grandfather clause.
Grandfather clause that could allow them. But they weren't technically impacted, but the families were if they had a student that was already attending there. So I
And they had several.
Yeah. I don't want to say no. The students themselves would have only attended Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any comments from the committee on this last group?
Okay. So moving on to group six. Group six is only one recommendation. The other request we received from instructional staff was to look at the current Eastern Ruth Ann Monroe model, where students attend Ruth Ann Monroe for pre-K through two and Eastern Elementary for grades three through five. Instructional staff asked the committee, hey, could you look at what it would take to maybe create two separate Attendance Zones where you would actually have two separate K-5 Attendance Zones, one for Eastern Elementary and one for Ruth Ann Monroe Primary? So the committee got through recommendations number one through 20, and they said, okay, this is what the resulting combined Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary look at. So here's the current Eastern Ruth Ann Monroe Primary Attendance Zone, and with recommendations number one through 20, here is the proposed Eastern and Ruth Ann Monroe Primary Attendance Zone. And looking at doing the divide, the committee said, okay, we would run the line around Yale Drive, down across US 40, and then we would come on Edgewood Drive over and pick up Funtstown, and that would create two separate Attendance Zones. So basically, the orange Attendance Zone would now go to an Eastern Elementary K-5 facility, and the green portion would go to the Ruth Ann Monroe Primary K-5 facility. I'm going to zoom in here a little bit closer to the split. So you can see, the dividing line is here at Yale Drive, Ruth Ann Monroe Primary to the south, Eastern Elementary to the north. It comes out, connects into Dul Highway, both, either side of Dul Highway, and then down to Edgewood Drive over to the creek at Funtstown. Trying to get my bearing here. Again, just for clarification, the orange area goes to Eastern Elementary, and the green area would go to Ruth Ann Monroe Primary. This would no longer be a split campus-type school area. This would be two separate facilities. One of the things that is pointed out in the report, students that reside in this area here are currently bused to both facilities because of the concerns and the safe routes of school and crossing Yale Drive. This would allow these students to now walk just to Eastern Elementary because they would no longer have to attend Ruth Ann Monroe Primary. no longer have to attend Ruth Ann Monroe Primary for their pre-K through 2 grades. They would only go to Eastern. That's one of the advantages. The other thing that we talked about and is identified in the report is, right now, having two schools, it's a major undertaking to provide transportation services to all of those students. Potentially, by splitting the two schools, it could allow them to go to maybe a different tier, and possibly you could still service the students and maybe utilize less buses. Again, that would have to be investigated as we move forward in the future, but those discussion points of the committee that we had are identified in the report.
Chad, just a question. I know when we first built Ruth Ann Monroe, we talked about the possibility of shifting it from a primary facility to a elementary level. I'm assuming, and I just don't remember, the facility will, is set up so it can handle, I mean, are all the things at a smaller scale and--
When we talked about that, we said, "What if Ruth Ann Monroe or Eastern ever had to be a middle school?"
Exactly.
Is there a possibility of making changes there? And I think our biggest change would be some toilet heights. So you think about Eastern Elementary. Eastern Elementary at some point was a K-5 school, so I wouldn't anticipate any changes there. We do need to take a look at Ruth Ann Monroe. Probably, we will switch out some of the toilet fixtures there, you know, maybe some handicap bars, some things like that. But it would have pre-K to, you know, similar to the grades that are there, there in portions of the school, pre-K K-1, 2 that are in the school already. So we might just have to look at some areas where they, where 3, 4, and 5 would be placed. Do we need to raise some toilet heights there? So fairly minor changes, even could swap back and forth between the two schools if pre-K was at Eastern suddenly, you know, do we have something small enough at Eastern for pre-K? But it'd be a fairly minor change, and with notice of a year and a half to do the work, that won't be a problem. We would do it next summer.
Right. And comments on 6 from the committee?
If you have any comments, other than, I know from instructional staff standpoint, it seemed like they seemed very on board with the aspect of, you know, creating two different boundaries in two different schools. That seemed to be particularly with, in essence, having older siblings, and I guess that would help particularly with Ruth Monroe, getting kids and younger siblings on the correct bus and helping out and having even some younger students to be able to model some of the older students' activities and that type of thing.
And I also think that we heard from the teachers there that when they go across the street, what happens to those students? And in elementary school, we're very focused on the whole child throughout their elementary school experience, and we lose that in a K-2 school. One of the other considerations was really the buses. On the first week of school, I can't even imagine what Ruth Ann Monroe is like with kids don't even know their names to get on the right bus. So that will alleviate some of those concerns because there will be some older students in the building, as well as maybe changing the school time so there's not that--
Traffic jam.
Traffic jam. But that's not our process. That's yours. So we feel that this is a recommendation that was asked of us, and I think we came up with a fairly good boundary of students. One of our other concerns was the farm rate, particularly at Eastern Elementary, and I think we kind of addressed some of those concerns with the farm rate going up higher at Eastern Elementary rather than at Ruth Ann Monroe. But we've had schools in our county where Winter Street was 90 percent, so Eastern will be pushed probably pretty close to that percentage with farm rate. But we did talk about that as well.
All right. This is the last grouping. Any wrap-up, Chad, and any questions from my colleagues? And then we'll sort of talk about next steps. No further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I talked for so long.
No, this is, this is great. We have plenty of time, and I would like to just stress the, again, Mrs. Fisher and I both served on FEAC for years, and, gosh, 10 years ago?
A while ago.
12 years ago. Few, few, and I can't begin to tell you how the process has changed and the technology involved in this and the ability, Chad, of being able to look at it. I just, I'm very impressed. I think Mrs. Fisher might concur. And this is a very productive way of having this discussion, so thank you again.
I would just like to thank Dr. Wilcox and the board for providing us with the GIS technology and the program. That made all the difference in the world. I know at the FEAC meetings, the ability for us to talk, it's not quite as simple as point and click, but with enough insight and enough heads-up, I was able to provide that information to the committee members. It certainly increased the discussion, gave us the opportunity to look at a lot of different options, and it was extremely beneficial. And it's been a well-used tool, and we're still learning it, but we're really enjoying it.
We used to go, "Well, what about that?" Staff would take the note, "What about that? Okay, we'll get back to you in two weeks. What about that?" And this is like click. That's what it would look like. And here are the roads we would capture. And by the way, here's the population. It's significant. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Just looking at the whole process, we're basically at step 4 today, which is the Board of Education. We've now received the final proposal from FEAC, and at this point, we turn it over to the superintendent. And superintendent and staff can accept it, can make comments, can adjust it, and then they basically send it out to the schools affected by this to try to get feedback from them. And then the superintendent and the board will coordinate a public hearing. So that's where we are on the next few steps. Dr. Wilcox?
That's where we are. So, you know, from my perspective, we'd like to thank FEAC certainly for the time and energy you put into this, but also for the great thought that you put into this. We have some actions to take a look at now as a staff based on some of the concerns brought up by Mrs. Harshman and others. So we will take a look at capacities, and then we will come back to the board with a final set of recommendations so that you can schedule public hearings and ultimately a series of votes.
Any comments on the process going forward while we're here together?
I just want to thank the members of the committee as well. I know your giving of your time in order to do this, and it's been a very long process for this one, but I think the work product that you brought us reflects the care and thought that you put into it. So thank you for that. And please pass my thanks along to your colleagues if you meet again. I don't know if you plan to meet anytime soon. You're probably tired of each other at this point.
We don't need to have a paper, but it's not today.
It's always a relief when board members ask, committee members ask questions, "What if we did this? What if we did that?" And the response you get back is, "Well, we talked about that, and here's the thought process that went into it." So I think that reflects very well on the process you use. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any more questions, comments from board members, I think we'll be adjourned. Thank you.